This conference will now be recorded.
It's Tony.
Did you find Tony, Chris?
I sent him an email with the code. I'd send the information.
He says he's arrived. Do you see him? I'll let you go, Tony. Thanks. It's okay. Chris, do you see Tony now? He said he was able to log on.
Yes, he's on, so.
Okay, so everybody has arrived. And we've got Danny from Tetra Tech, is that right? And Russ Weir?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
Steven Bloom is on the line.
Okay. And Mr. Geppert?
Mr. Geppert is also here. And one is on.
Okay, it's 3:11, so let's go ahead and call the meeting to order.
And if you'd like, I'll read the.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
That's your supervisor Flaherty. It's here. Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Here. Margaret Feinberg?
Here.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
And we also have Anthony Pierce is on the line, the attorney, and Steven Bloom, district manager's on, Leslie Sauls. Kenny Hall. And Tony, do you want me to read the first paragraph for the perfunctory statement that we read last week?
Chris, we're having a hard time hearing you.
How about now?
That's better.
Not better? Okay. Tony, do you want me to read the first paragraph for that amended notice statement for the record, or was last week?
Or was last week by given?
By given.
Tony, are you there?
Looks like you disappeared.
I didn't jump in the air.
Unmuted mic.
Here I am.
There he is.
Tony? We have you audio and visual?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had to play with my settings.
Okay. And I'll read the first paragraph for this for the record that notices hereby given that the previously advertised regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors to services, Community Development District, starting with the previously advertised notice, regular meeting, to be held on April 16th, will be conducted by the following media technology, COVID meeting, pursuant to executive orders, 52, 69, and 99 by the governor on March 9th, March 20th, till such times as the above noted orders expire. The units are being held for the necessity purposes, including but not limited budgeting and assessment, who's considering impacts or potential impacts of the COVID-19 virus on district district-owned infrastructure facilities. At such time, the board is so authorized and may consider any business that may properly come before it. And we could move to the regular agenda.
Hey, Chris.
This is a lot of feedback.
Tony, say that again?
I don't know if anybody else is, but I'm getting an echo.
Me too.
How about now?
Now it's better. Better.
And I know Mrs. Flaherty left the room. Is she back? Oh, she's back.
Oh, she's back.
Yeah.
I don't see her.
She just may not be on video.
Mrs. Flaherty is invisible to me.
Kathleen, are you on?
She's sitting right next to you, Bill.
I think we should just, I think we should still proceed.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start with the pledge of the allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic. One nation, under God.
And first on the agenda today with the meeting, we have public comments, if there are any public comments from the audience regarding on agenda items, if you would speak up or you could send in a chat.
Hey, Chris, now that we started the meeting, would you want to call the roll to see? It looks like it says Kathy Flaherty has left. I still have that shown.
Okay, well, we did call the roll, but I'll put note on here that she's left the meeting, and then when she comes back.
Okay.
And Tony, we called the roll right when you were getting hooked up and your sound wasn't working.
Thank you, sorry.
Well, I don't think Kathleen has left the meeting. She's just not visible or responding.
Okay. And are there any comments? Mr. Geppert, do you have any comments? His.
I'm unmuted now. Um, I'm not sure if the, when in the course of the meeting, the eration of bonds, one and 13 will come up and use of the funds or, you know, if it needs to come up here. For putting narrations in bond one and 13 and using the bond fund. Is that what you're referring to, Bill, that you wanted me to talk about?
I think we had that discussion and it was approved at the last meeting. Now we're.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Tony and myself and Danny.
Okay, then I have nothing else. I'm just attentive to what's going on.
Okay.
Excuse me, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. For some reason, the computer's not working right. But I am here.
Thank you. Good to know.
Kathleen, can you, um, do you have your laptop in front of you?
I have two in front of me.
Can you make sure that they're both muted? Because I think we're getting some echoing effect because you.
Okay, I'm also on my phone because the computer wasn't.
That's the problem. Yeah, so you need to, whatever you're, if you're on your phone, and that's where you're going to listen and interact, then on your computer, you need to mute.
Okay, I will try.
Okay, let's move forward. District Attorney.
Yeah, I guess first, um, I didn't, you know, I'm not sure I heard. I apologize if I was fumbling around if Chris mentioned it. Chris, have any, anybody email or fax or mail any comments in and any agenda item before today's meeting?
No, we did not receive any public comment or comment on any of the agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Just wanted to make sure because again, of the nature of this meeting, the item 2A1, it's a latest resolution that's needed for the funding of the construction loan, SW36044. There's a resolution number 2026, 2020-6 in your agenda packet, but also attached for only your information purposes is my opinion letter. We would request the board to approve the chair executing resolution number 2020-6 for an SRF construction loan for project SW36044. And the principal amount of that borrow will be $2,150,930.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second?
A second.
I'll second. No, go ahead. Let Doug have it.
And for discussion or comments? Now, I'll add that this application for funding for the phase of the lake banks was presented to the board in January, and the application was approved at that time, and then I'm going to the chair and forward it to the FDEP. Is there any discussion?
I have none.
There's a dollar amount here in this resolution. The dollar amount is $2,150,930.
I heard you say that, but I can't find it in the resolution.
It's not in the resolution. It's in my opinion letter, Mr. Guy, which is page six of the agenda packet.
Chris, go through each of the supervisors and ask for comments and then the vote the same way like we did the last time.
Okay, we'll ask for comments. Supervisor Flaherty?
I have no comment.
Okay. Mr. Guy?
None.
Okay, Mr. Banks?
None for me.
Here?
Isn't Mr. Tinkle next?
No comments.
And I have none. I thought that was the order. Sorry.
And we'll move forward with the vote, and I'll go in the same order. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Chair Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Aye.
That action passes 5-0. For the state revolving loan fund, letter of legal opinion and resolution for the loan application, SW36044.
Hey, Chris, can you, um, can you see if you can manually mute Kathleen's line that she's not using, the one that's, it says KF?
I'm sorry, I muted me on the, on the thing, on the computer.
You've got one open that's under your name, Kathleen, and it's still open. I think that's where some of the echo is coming from, maybe.
According to me, I'm, I'm, my microphone is muted. Now, did I leave? Okay, no.
Yeah, there's echoes coming from you. But you're downed on your phone, Kathleen. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I'm on the phone and on the computer, but the computer isn't showing me.
Okay, because.
I could see everybody.
Okay.
Okay, we have those two lines muted now.
Okay. Maybe that'll help. Okay, sorry, Chris. There's still an echo, but.
Next, um, it's in the memorandum for the fiscal year 2021 is Danny.
For the, for the, for the record, it's Danny, Danny Nelson. I'm doing that on purpose.
God forbid, there's two of you.
You always have to be a smart alley.
I'm not sure how, for the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. There is an echo, though. I don't know where that is.
Yes, there is.
I don't know where that's coming from, but if you guys can hear me okay. So how things have been done in the past has been that, you know, staff has developed their best guesstimate for engineering or capital improvements related projects, which they will still do for, for things that Kenny is directly involved with or otherwise. But Chris asked if I would actually put together capital improvement items for those engineering-related services. And so that's essentially what you see in front of you. There's a cover memo which summarizes the items. The first one is the general engineering services, which is just our basic contract for miscellaneous items that don't have a task authorization associated with them. And the other items that are on there are those items that were identified within the facilities plan, so the majority being within the recent CIP facilities plan, and the last being the lake bank improvement. So it's just our best guesstimate at this point of capturing those costs, both engineering and construction. So I don't know how, Chris, you want to proceed or how the board wants to proceed, if you want to go through them individually, if you want to, you know, if you're going, I doubt you're going to include all of these items, but they're, they're a la carte there for your picking.
What we were using this for is one, the general engineering services under the different categories in the budget, and Danny provided that by the category. And the projects that you see in front on the first page of the memo are the projects that were included in the facilities plan that was sent to DEP that they reviewed, which basically then allows us to put in an application for one. And what we'll do, and we don't have to do it at this time, is Kenny's put together a priority list from the utility side of these projects, and we were going to address them during the capital improvements budget side. But we're also.
That's perfect. So this could just be for informational, Chris, at this point?
Yeah, it's informational, but we'll also be including these projects and what the debt service will be in the rate case.
Right.
We're helping right now so that you can see the impact of each of these projects on the rate and have a little more financial information to see where it would go if we borrowed the money from SRF and how it would impact the utility rates to cover that debt service.
Question?
Right.
Yes, and do you want me to start with questions across the board?
Yes, please.
Same, with the same order. Supervisor Flaherty, questions? Okay, she's muted, even on her phone. Supervisor Flaherty, do you have any questions?
Why am I muted? I'm muted. Okay, can you hear me now? Thank you. Um, the only question I have is, all the following this memo, everything is six to nine months. Do you plan to do all those within the year or beyond?
It's up to how the board wants to proceed.
Okay.
And we'll be addressing, addressing those two in the capital improvements section of the budget, how many, how many we want to add. Of course, it would be very difficult on all sides to get these all underway at one time during the year.
Yeah.
But we would hope by the budget discussions preliminary today, but next week when we have them in detail, that we'll prioritize those projects.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Banks?
And if I can, if I can expand on that too, Chris, and it just makes, no reason, is it maybe part of the discussion that you'll have is there are items that are related, so it may make sense that some things are done simultaneously, and/or it may make sense that some are done, you know, after others. So just, you know, kind of keep that in mind as we go through talking about those.
I'll move on with comments. Supervisor Banks?
Yeah, Chris, and so with these items, you mentioned SRF, but we are looking at being able to recuperate this from, from the potential modified assessment?
Well, they would be, that would all come out of the utility rates, and, you know, part of it would be operational and part of it would be the base facility charge. And that's what we'll be doing with the rate case is showing you the impacts of each of these projects and how it would impact that utility rate. Because that's where the payment for the debt service would come from, would be user bills. And if the projects were staggered, then obviously the bills would go up in the, in the same method, same timing. And if some projects were retired, you may cover them, but that's what we'll be detailing in the rate case. And we'll be doing the same thing with that $1.75 million estimated cost for the utility relocations for the roundabouts. But these projects have all been included in the facilities plan, so would all be eligible for SRF funding where the roundabouts are not.
And this would come, portion of this would come out of, so if we, if we did a, you know, did an SRF loan, basically the, the principal would be paid through that, or at least a portion, I would imagine, would be paid through that, through the, through the accrued rates or the, the proposed assessment modifications. Is that how I'm interpreting this?
They all be through the rates for the utility projects. See, of course, the Phase Two Lake Bank at the bottom project, that's, that is through assessments. But these other projects are all strictly utility.
Right, and that's the point I'm trying to get to, is part of the restructuring allows us to allows us to basically fund these projects through a revenue resource that is kind of outside of, of an assessment solution.
Correct.
Right, so that's what we need to, that's, for me, that's what I'm thinking about is when we look at, you know, looking at assessments this year and next year and, and the things that we need to get done, there's either we raise assessments or we unadditional revenue streams that are going to offset that cost to keep assessments down. Now, we could argue that it's a little bit apples to, apples to oranges, because if you, we modify the assessment, I'm sorry, the, well, I guess the assessment methodology, but more from the utility that people would be paying, some people could be paying more, so it's still an impact to the resident. However, I think the argument is that that would come through literally just an additional revenue stream as opposed to us having to solely rely on assessments to fund these, these projects. Is that somewhat accurate? I mean, at least, is that directionally correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The rate, the ratepayers would benefit from these projects, so they're the ones that absorb the costs, and you really have a question there is how much you would, they want to do out of cash flow versus borrowing from the SRF. And typically, a lot of utilities, if they get a good interest rate, they'll borrow the money. Supervisor Feinberg, comments?
I had a question, and that was on the Phase Two, Year Two Lake Bank improvements. It's got 16 lakes listed. But some of these are actually being done now, like 83 and 59. I don't have all the numbers in front of me of the lakes that we're doing this year. This is page, Chris, it's page 33 that I'm looking at of the.
Yeah, so if you look in the paragraph under where those are listed, I list the ones that are underway currently. 59, 83, 91, 93. So the rest of the, of those are the ones remaining. And not, and not saying that they would all be done next year, I'm just saying those are the ones remaining. I doubt they would all be done next year.
But I know that 59 is being done this year. 83 is almost complete, and it's part of the 16.
All I'm doing in that is just identifying which ones are in Phase Two. So the 16 are all what are considered the Phase Two.
Okay, so this price includes all of them, even the ones that are being done currently? So this price would actually come down?
I don't think that's correct.
Right, the price is what would be for the construction management and the inspection on the professional side, and then on the repair side, I believe that. There's that echo again. But the, the price on the construction side, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not positive. I'd have to go back and look at that. You may be right, but I don't. Mr. Tinkle may know. Oh, that's annoying.
Okay. Okay. I'll wait till we get further into the. I just, I just want to make sure we're identifying the correct lakes that'll be in next year's budget.
Yeah, definitely the ones that are the 58, 62, 79, 85. Those are definitely the lakes that are remaining. I'd have to double check if the $2 million, what that includes. I know I pulled it whenever I was putting this together, but I can't recall right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Tinkle, comments?
Yeah, first of all, I think this is a wise idea of doing this. This is the way or what we should have been doing for a long, long time. Appreciate that, Danny. And to answer a question that or respond to what Doug had talked about, there is a big difference on these. Those that are in the enterprise fund are based on a use basis, which are usually through our meter. So the more you use, the more you pay, whereas the assessments, those are going to come out, or those related to the assessments, which are basically the stormwater, those are going to be based upon whatever assessment methodology we have yet to approve. Moving on, page two, Chris, if you can put that up on the, well, page two of Danny's report. I don't know what it is on the deal. Couple of questions, Danny. As soon as he gets us up. Can you keep going back, Chris?
I think it's page 20.
Okay, thank you. There you go. Go up just a little more so I'd see the top. There you go. Danny, question one is at the top, it's entitled general engineering fees, professional fees, $155,000. The items in column number two, 2020, 2021, do not add $255,000.
You're right. The 95 is, the 95 is the number, sorry.
Okay, so the 155 is 95?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Second question is, what's the origin of these numbers? Is this based on history, best guess of what we're going to incur?
History and best guess, yes.
Okay, and the last, the, the last one is we've got a serious issue relative to our stormwater management system, and it relates to the crossing of I-75, which means we're going to be having some meetings at which both engineering and legal, and hopefully very little legal, is going to be involved in getting a new pipe or a box or something going under I-75. That is going to cost some money. I don't see that anywhere in that right-hand column on what probably would be under item two, $35,000 being reduced to $22,000. I, I just think we're going to enter into costs in, in 2020 and 2021. I'm getting feedback.
I'm getting feedback.
Really bad.
Yeah, real bad.
Yeah, real bad.
Anyway, my issue, my issue is, is that Danny is, does that include any work that would be involved in the engineering to deal with both Lee County, the state of Florida, and South Florida Water Management District on that I-75 crossing?
No, and that item would need to be a separate task. Oh, that's annoying.
Everybody else, feedback?
Yes.
Yes.
The, so it would need to be a separate task item. So, I mean, that's. The uh, so it would need to be a separate task um item, um, so I mean, that's something that as we go through. The different budget items and capital uh improvement items. That if um, you know, if the board and district wants to uh include that, I could certainly prepare up a uh. A similar um memo for that, but no, it wouldn't be covered under that twenty-two thousand, I don't think that would. You know, that, that's basically for miscellaneous items as needed that we just do throughout the year, that may be an hour to here there, but that would need its own. Um, task authorization, so yeah, as we go through the budget and talk about those things, if that's something that um. Uh, it, it will happen in the next fiscal year, then that's something that should be um captured as a, as a cost.
Mr. Tinkle, looks like you're talking, but you've muted yourself, or did you mute your cell phone?
I just looked at it, uh, no, I was saying that this, this is great, uh, I, I, I think this is a well, a good way to initiate the budget process.
Adam Chairman, do I get to make a statement or two?
Yes. Bill, go right ahead.
You snooze, you lose, Bill.
On the um agenda page nineteen, the, the one, first page of Danny's memo. I understood Chris to say that all of these projects have been approved for inclusion into the CPI. That's when I must have been snoozing because I don't remember uh ever uh in. Brief store voted on uh one that would be called FPL wet water storage, which sounds like. Somebody thinks we ought to spend a million dollars to hose down the Florida power and light easement, which we don't have title to yet and might not. And I don't imagine that I would ever have voted for anything in favor of that, uh, can you help me out there, somebody?
Sure, well.
Yeah.
All these were completely approved.
Yeah, but this was, um, these projects were all included in the facilities plan that was submitted to uh FDEP in January. And there's no, no commitment, um, all it is is you to be eligible for funding, you have to submit that plan to the DEP and then review it and then consider the plans. Viable that you would still have to put in an application for funding, which would require board approval and you would have to put in an. Application, um, and a resolution and the legal letter to get approved for that loan to borrow the money, so this is just. Was preliminary in that facilities plan.
Do you or other board members think that we're gonna, we're, we're gonna spend a million dollars to hose down the FPL easement?
Well, the uh, the impetus for that project was during Hurricane Irma, uh, we did not have any place to put the effluent that was coming into the plant, which uh people can sit. Continue to flush their toilets and we got to the point and nobody was irrigating and we have to take that effluent from Lee County and it became to a point where their storage tank was overflowing. And we didn't have any place to put the water and also during wet times when we're still taking that effluent, that's why you see us running the sprinklers on Gateway Boulevard during the day or at times when it's been raining for a few days. So it's really an overflow mechanism to have a place to put that reclaimed water, um, because when you get the.
I could put up with the sprinklers running during the rain as opposed to spending a million dollars to hose down the FPL.
Um, and uh, and when the county comes up for their next permitting on that plant, they're going to. Require them to have alternative disposal and if we don't have it, then they'll look to other users for the reclaimed water. But right now we have no place during heavy times to put that water except for into our sprinkler system. And during the hurricane, we were running the sprinklers out on the soccer field, um, to try to get rid of it, which was one thing, but the residents didn't care much for us watering the rest of the community.
This is a contractual issue with the uh LCU.
Again, please?
This is a contractual issue with LCU, they have us in a corner. It's the only way that we can get out and keep the water of that wastewater treatment plant from being donated or given to another entity on the grounds that we violated the contract.
Well, isn't that interesting and uh you, you, you certainly have a better understanding of that than I, I must admit. You're saying that.
Part of it is I just trust Lee County, as far as I can throw them.
And part of the projects are kind of, it's our master wish list, nothing, nothing has been set in stone and we haven't actually approved individual projects. It's just kind of projects that we need to seriously be considering.
Bill, an alternative that was talked about and I'd even uh look at that as an alternative would be to put in a storage, not tank, but a lagoon. In the FPL easement south of Griffin Drive to hold all this water in the summertime, but you're talking about a massive structure.
Hey, um. Why do you, why do you, why do you think once we get the area to the west of I-75 finished, that that will give us a lot of relief?
This, this doesn't have anything to do with that.
Yeah.
This is, this is, say that this is sanitary sewage coming out of the wastewater treatment plant that we contractually have to put on irrigation. We've got the choice of uh drinking it, I suppose, uh, the other option is to put it on all of our common area, which ruins the common area. Or three, we dispose of it or retain it in another way and we're looking at this point as that latter as being the only viable option.
So, let me just throw, I, I want to, I want to be clear on, on this one piece, so if we. One of the options that we talked about is being able to basically spray it on the, on the FPL easement. Uh, but in order to do that, we're going to have to basically run, what run lines and.
You have to pipe it and put in irrigation heads.
You're right, what would it be? So there's, the, the only other available land that is close to. Uh, I think to the facility is that plot of land behind the soccer field. Um, that we were going to use for the storage unit, is it possible to um. To do something with that that might be cheaper, whether that's like, um, so I guess you can't just dump, I think we've had this before, but you can't, you can't just dump this into a, any, any pond, um, right? So.
It's gotta be a structure.
It's gotta be a structure. Has to be a structure, define that.
Give you, give you, give you an ideas to the order of magnitude of what we're talking about to get this in perspective. Is every acre one foot deep holds three hundred and twenty-some thousand gallons, we're talking about millions of gallons. So you're going to talk about a pond or a structure or a tank that is going to be really big. That's why that really doesn't pan out to be a very viable option to store this water, the only answer is to really put it on the ground.
You, we, hold on just a minute, you, you're, now you're talking about wastewater, am I correct? Is that correct?
No, it's.
Yes.
It's not, it's not rainwater or wastewater.
Irrigation.
It's reuse water, water that's treated at the wastewater treatment plant.
It's allowed by uh by law for application.
Yes.
Answer it.
To, to go back to uh. Some of the things that the governor's been having some conversation about?
I'm sorry?
My recollection is the governor and his uh task force in South Florida Water Management, all of those folks are. Are, are, are thinking about changing the regulations on what you could put on the ground or what you could put on the ground near streams and what you can do here and there.
Well, this, this one here is a different situation, it's water that's coming out of the wastewater treatment plant that we've entered into a contract with Lee County Utilities. We have stipulated to them that we will utilize this water for irrigation purposes, so our only choices are either to put it on the ground or to retain it. What I'm trying to say is, is that at three hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons per acre foot and two million gallons a day coming out of that plant. You're going to need one big lake to hold all this water during the summer, during the wet season.
And can you, or, or Chris, can you just quantify how often this release would need to happen, I know it'll, and maybe in the. Um, you know, special event or uh special circumstances like in the event of, you know, uh, a large storm or something like that, but in normal. Conditions, how often would we need to release volumes of water and and typically how much volume, um, and under, under normal. And, you know, average annual um conditions.
Well, we.
Let me, let me start to answer it, Chris, because I think it's a, it's a double-edged sword, um, and it's a double-edged sword, it's going to get even more double-edged. Um, within the next year to two years, because your current agreement states that uh we take all of the effluent that comes from that plant. Um, which is good for the dry season, we need more, more water than we, we currently have, I mean, we're, we're pulling from the. The groundwater that has salinity issues in the dry season, so it's going to be good when we start getting flow from the school and from the new development to the east. But the problem is going to be, is going to be increased as we move forward, so, so Chris can go back and answer like what it is now, but just keep in mind. That unless there is somewhere else in the future, that right now, one hundred percent of the flows are coming from Gateway with the exception of a little bit off of uh Daniel's, but for the most part, it's coming from Gateway. And it's being applied in Gateway, so in the future, you're going to have flows coming from, a lot of flows coming from outside of Gateway that you're also going to have to address unless some, that flow can go somewhere else.
Yeah, and let me just add one more thing who, before whoever answers this, because I think, I think Bill and I are trying to get to the same thing, it's validating the spin, what's the cost benefit? If we, if we spend this, this amount, what are we saving, what are we gaining as opposed to not spending it? Or spending a smaller amount, what, what's the cost benefit or the justification here?
Well, here's the other part too, and then I'll let Chris kind of, not, not interrupt you, Chris, anymore, but um, the other part we have to consider is regulatory. So it's one thing to say we can store it somewhere, or we can apply it somewhere, we can do that, but the, the problem with an area like behind the uh, the soccer field is that. Um, you know, if you guys go and dump all this water on there and it can't hold it, um, you know, the, the state's going to come back and tell you, you've got to, you've got to do something, so there are um. There are uh accepted and, and rules written, written on what you can do with effluent, there's science behind application areas, what they can take. Um, groundwater or, or what the percolation rate, evaporatranspiration rate, and you put all of this in a formula, you justify the size of an area, an area the size of the FPL easement. Um, i- i- you don't have to worry about, you don't have enough water that you can, you can even worry about that in the wet season with everything else you're doing, if you start putting on a small area, say a couple of acres.
I understand.
State's not going to let you do that.
Right.
My only comments are, right now, with our contract with Lee County, we don't pay for reclaimed water, which is very unusual. And also it's very weather dependent issue because when we're in the winter season or the snowbird season is when our flows go up thirty percent. But we don't necessarily have a thirty percent increase in the demand for irrigation water because the temperatures are cooler. And then sometimes those times of year, they're wet and a lot of times when the snowbirds go home and the flows go down and things get dry, we're utilizing a hundred percent of that reclaim, so it, it's very weather dependent. And that's why, um, you know, during season, when the people are here, you'll see us running the sprinklers a lot. Um, when it may have rained the day before, we don't need to, we, we're just getting rid of that water because we have to take it.
Chris, I just did a very crude calculation based over the wet season. And then took fifty percent of that number for the amount of water we would have to handle or store and it works out to be a lake, sixty acres. In size, six feet deep to hold the amount of water we have to store.
Yeah, and so, and.
What you get, that's what you get when you got a two, two and a half million gallon, gallon a day wastewater treatment plant producing water that we have to use, that we have no customers to use it.
Yeah, and so I think what I'm hearing is because we don't pay for that water, because we have an agreement to uh. To assume and, and I guess dispose of, of the reclaim, if we weren't, if we could not facilitate that action. Then that could negate our ability to, to have that partnership agreement where we don't, we're not paying for reused water, is that? Is that kind of what we're saying here, that the, the justification is if we, if we continue to, to enhance our ca, our, our ability. To, to dispose of that water, however we deem appropriate, that offsets our, our no purchase cost for the water, is that accurate?
If what you're saying is converted to use it or lose it, that's exactly what our issue is.
And yeah, and if we lose it, what is a ballpark amount on our annual usage that we would have to pay?
It's worse than that, means your yard's going to be brown in the off-season because we are going to have to be drilling wells like crazy to get water.
Well, we would.
Very expensive.
Wouldn't we have to purchase that reclaimed water as opposed to just being gifted it?
That, well, if we can, what they're going to do is they're going to turn around and sell it to the highest bidder, Timber Creek over here screaming like a pig under a gate, they want that water, so does the airport, other people want this water, it's very valuable, we have an asset, we do not want to lose.
Okay, now that makes more sense, that's starting to at least draw a picture of why we would spend. Uh, money to dispose of this water because if we don't, we, it, it puts us at, at an, an advantage, being able to have this water available a, at the volume that we need it. But also, um, if, if we're not capable of, of dispelling it, then. We could put us at risk for either volume or potential cost down the road.
Yeah, it's kind of a collateral damage we get that during the dry season, we need it in the wet season, we've got to figure out what to do with it.
And there historically, this issue's come up before about five years ago. The district got a nasty letter from Lee County Utilities that said your irrigation distribution system is dilapidated. And we're worried about it not functioning and being able to handle our reclaimed water distribution load. And at that time is when the district upgraded and went to the um high-service pumps and upgraded the system back there and built a new distribution line because Lee County said if you can't handle it, we'll find someone that will because. They're required by permit to have a secondary disposal for that water, whether it's ponds or tanks, they have to have three days of storage and they have to be able to get rid of it, so if you aren't pumping it out on the ones. Which is advocated by the Water Management District, um, it, it needs to go somewhere.
Yeah, I think the big point is, at this point in time, we may be losing focus, this is just an identification of need of assets that we need to do. We haven't committed to nor approved any of these, we've just got them on the uh horizon as, as things that are uh, are potential. And I think, Chris, this is a, 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 a great way of doing it, I wish we had done it for years to show this kind of information, at least we go into budget, uh, knowing what these potential numbers are.
Uh, if I may, just, just one, one, and I don't know how much it's been brought up in Lee County. The agreement says that we take uh, uh, except for use, subject to generally acceptable landscape maintenance standards in the community. For use and acceptance and subject to health, safety and welfare considerations, also reuse water, full water. And so I guess that's, that's the only objective, uh, generally acceptable landscape maintenance standards in the community, subject to health, safety and welfare considerations. Arguably, you could spend budget, you can say, uh, you can slow down sending it to us.
Your, your only problem with that, Tony, is when they start talking about generally accepted. Your, your only problem with that, Tony, is when they start talking about generally accepted landscape principles, and then you start applying so many inches per acre or so many inches per square yard or whatever, we're gonna be so high over that number in the wet season, it's not funny. So they can come back and really hammer us on that, that we're noncompliant with generally accepted principles.
Okay, even though we're, we're taking so much, we're still not, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Well, I really got something going there, didn't I?
Yes, you did. Thank you, Bill.
Good discussion.
Item C we have is the District Management Report. I just had a few things to bring up, and one, we got the Special District Candidates. They qualify beginning Monday, May twenty-fifth. And we have the information. We've also posted on the website for the different steps and dates for candidates for the Board of Supervisor elections.
Chris, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear any of that.
Um, yes, sir. We have the Special District Candidates information. Pre-qualifying begins ten AM, and the official
Anybody else understand what he's saying?
Echo is so bad, I can't-
Hold on, hold on a minute. How about now?
You got an awful-
I'm doing a lot of repeating echoing.
Hey, we're trying to mute some microphones here to see if that's doing it. But it's just Special District Candidate Qualifying Dates, and it has been posted to the website.
Thank you.
And on that point, the statute also, the, the legislative sites in their infinite wisdom have delegated tasks to various parties. The Supervisor election already put an ad in the paper as to which seats are available for all the special districts in Lee County. That was about a week or so ago.
They've done it twice, Tony.
I'm sorry?
They've done it twice.
Right, and then Chapter one ninety has a separate section that we need to post notice in the newspaper at least two weeks prior to the start of the qualifying period. So I'll coordinate with Steve and Bloom and Chris for that. So we have to, two weeks prior to the start of the qualifying period, we have to publish a notice of the qualifying period set by the Supervisor of Elections. So again, you gotta love the legislature. They just do fun stuff.
Okay, oh, we'll take care of that. Also, I wanted to mention they're going to be closing part of Griffin Drive starting today to put the water line crossing in for the school. So that will be a bit of a headache for the next two or three days while they do that open cut of the water line, and then they'll be restoring the road. But luckily, the traffic's light at that time. And related to traffic also, yesterday, we received the sixty percent plans from Lee County for the roundabout at Griffin Drive and Gateway Boulevard. And they've asked us to provide them comments by May fourth. And the last thing I had, we also got notice of District Wide Water Shortage Warning. And it's a reminder from the Water Management District about the two day a week watering. And this information, we also posted to the website and will be distributing to the homeowners associations, the management companies and the irrigation companies that work in Gateway. And that's all I have today, and we're ready to move on to the action agenda. Which starts with item three A, purchase order for the Gateway High School water meters. And these meters are pricey when you see them, but the cost of those meters are paid for by the school where they don't pay impact or connection fees. They do pay the meter fees. So-
Questions?
Sure, questions? And I'll start with Supervisor Flaherty. Any questions? Okay, well, move to Supervisor Guy. Questions?
I have no questions.
Okay. Supervisor Banks, any questions related to this item?
No questions.
Chair Feinberg, questions?
None.
Okay, Mr. Tinkle? Help yourself.
Save, save, save the best for the last, I guess. I, I got a real problem. It, it looks like to me we're using more Zener meters.
Say again?
Looks like to me we're using more Zener meters.
Yes, they certainly are Zener meters, and to give you an update, the Zener staff, they're sending four people in on the twenty-seventh of this month for a few weeks, and then another staffer coming in May eleventh to replace all the defective parts and do an investigation. And we basically have a pallet and a half of all these sitting out. So coming in, and hopefully they can get to the bottom of this issue.
Okay, so the, so the three meters that we're putting in, the six inch compound and the two ten inch compound, they're all Zeners. I guess, trying to figure out what is our protection to avoid that we don't have three major meters with the problems that we have ran into heretofore on two or three thousand other meters?
I, I think what we need to do, let me back up, Ed, I was looking at some of the materials that, thirteen hundred email, thirteen hundred pages of emails and documents that I got from Leslie and Kenny, Kenny, they put together on the Zener issue and the meters. I guess a couple of issues. Chris, when you say that Zener's gonna be here in a couple of weeks with four people, are they going to be actually going out into the field and fixing the installs with the units? Or are they just going to do it in your shop and then you all and district staff do the replacement?
No, they're, they're actually going out in the field and doing all the replacements and programming that's attendant with it.
Okay, do, do we have that in writing that they're going to do that?
Yes.
Okay, secondly, one thing, the warranty that they have, other meetings, it talks about that they're only responsible to replace the materials and not any consequential or other damages of. So I guess the question is Ford Line was the contractor on the meter project in Florida, and, and Ford Line dumped off on the subcontractors being the cause of the issue. The Zener meters are causing the problem. And so, you know, we may end up making a demand on Zener for the meters and maybe on Ford Line for the defective construction or installation also. So I, I guess we just need to make sure that there are, the warranties cover more than just the replacement of the parts and materials. I think that's where Mr. Tinkle was heading also.
Bingo.
It's, we don't have an issue, like I say, a Zener meter. We don't have problems with their meters, but we have a problem with utilities, the MIUs and MERS.
The MERS are part of the meter, correct?
They're all part of the meter, aren't they?
Well, they're, no, they, they just pick up the readings from the meter. There's several different transmittal.
But the MERS made by Zener also, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, Tony, I agree with you, a- as long as, and as long as we've got our backsides covered on these three major expensive meters such that they don't end up later on being additive to our list of other problems, I would be appreciative. In other words, put something in the contract that gets these separated out that this isn't gonna be treated like the others where we have that twenty year agreement and we pay back this, that, and the other. They are going to warrant these things, that they are not going to fail.
Installation, yeah, installation, parts and materials.
Parts and materials, correct.
And, and installation and operation too, and so, I think that's what you're saying.
Yes, yeah. And then the other question I have, I think, I think we're all in agreement with that. We need more exposure like we need to hold our head. The, the other question I have, Chris, have we already billed them for thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and they paid for it?
Yes, those meters have been paid for by the school.
Is, is everybody else having the same problem I'm having? I'm having a hard time understanding, Chris.
I'm having a hard time.
The feedback is bad.
Yeah, I think I understood what you said, Chris, and that's fine. What Tony indicated covers all the issues I have and, and concerns I've got. We're in this Zener deal, and I, I don't know that we can get out of it. It creates a mess if we would do any changes right now. I just want to make sure that our collateral damage going forward is contained.
Well, and the, the request is to approve for the school. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
In a second? Okay, and then voting, Supervisor Flaherty? Okay, Supervisor Flaherty, can you hear me? And I'll go to Supervisor Guy for the vote.
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Banks?
Hi.
Chair Feinberg?
Hi.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Hi.
Yes, Kathy?
Okay, I said yes too. You, I think you muted me and didn't unmute me.
Okay. And I think that may be where the echo's coming from. Okay.
Real, real low. So you can't hear me.
Okay, and we'll move on to Action Item B, which is the Assessment Methodology and the Engineers' Report. And there's been a presentation on three different occasions on the methodology. The report has been distributed. We've also presented it to P-PAC. And we have assessments that are shown, were shown by individual homes in the last set of reports, and also shown as rolled up by the subdivisions. And we also have Russ Wire here, so we'd like to recognize Russ and then see if we have any questions or comments from the board, and, and I'll do the, the same order if I could. Start with Supervisor Flaherty.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
You have comments for me, Chris?
Yeah, I have some questions. Okay, I appreciate the total methodology assessment, but I still think the one with the individual assessment for each house is more appropriate. I know, can you still hear me? All right. And I think that's actually more fair because somebody who has only a two bedroom house should not have to pay the same amount as somebody with a four bedroom house. That's my only comment.
Are we looking for a response?
No, I just made a comment.
Chris, are you here?
I think we lost Chris.
Chris stepped out.
Okay, I'll move to Mr. Bank. Any comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, this is a very big change from the way we've been handling our assessments in the past twenty-five years. That, without any time attempt to review this with the residents or hold a public hearing. Secondly, I object very strenuously to putting a big additional burden on the churches in our community and, and having huge relief through the Gateway Golf Course. Thirdly, we've already spent twenty-six thousand dollars on this according to the District Manager. And apparently, we're gonna be asked to have an annual review on this. And although I've had more, more time on this item than just about any other in the last nine years I've been on this board, the sleight of hand that goes along with the permeable versus impermeable da-da-da-da-da, leaves me completely cold and one that I would not and will not try and defend to our residents. Therefore, even if we wanted move in some positive direction on this thing, I think the best idea would be to not try and put this into the twenty-twenty-one budget year, but at least defer it for one more year while we can study it further. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Chris, are you back?
Yes, Supervisor Banks, comments? Or questions?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that an updated assessment methodology is, is needed. From what I understand, our existing methodology, we can't we can't fully justify, you know, some of the formulas and, and some of the percentages today. I would like to kind of, again, look for some additional specifics. Under Bill, you had said, you mentioned the golf course and the churches. But if there are specific areas that we need to have some conversation on, either making amendments or, or adjusting or getting further clarification from Russ, I think now's a good time to do it. I don't have any specifics. I don't have any issues with any, any of the specifics. But I, I, I haven't been as close to it and haven't been around as long as, as Margaret you and, and Bill have, so I really look to you and really to all the board members to, to bring up what areas they feel strongly about, either positive or negative, so we can get to a consensus. But I, I don't think delaying, I don't know if another year would give us any more visibility or less. I, I'm not, I'm not sure. I just hate pushing something off that I think has value or benefit. So I don't know what additional iterations we need in order for us to come to a consensus. That's, that's my comments.
Okay, and Mr. Tinkle, questions, comments?
Uh, yeah. Totally opposed to this being delayed another year. We've done that. We've kicked this can down the road since nineteen eighty-six, and I don't want to be a party to kicking it any further. Bill, I'm, I'm going through the commercial and the non-residentials in Pelican Reserve, and I'm having a hard time finding a church. Am I missing something?
Yeah, look at the first page.
I, I didn't say that, Bill. I said, where in Pelican Reserve is there a church?
Pardon me?
I'm saying where-
Say again, please, I can't hear-
There a church that's impacted by this?
Bill, he's saying, Ed's asking you-
Say again.
I think what Ed is asking you is, if you have an issue with churches, there's no churches in Pelican Reserve.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
I'd like to remind you, I am a representative of the entire Gateway community, not just Pelican.
Thank you, thank you. Then I think that what I would much rather see, and I talked to Russ about this, I don't like the idea of doing the, the, the impact of this on the churches. This is as a result of a mathematical calculation. It's not somebody arbitrarily picking numbers and penalizing a church. It is what it is. They have so many acres. They have impervious surface. They have trip generation. They have all these other things that add up to this. I would have absolutely no problem, especially in light of the fact that we've got three schools and we have a hospital property on our property that gets away with zero. Zero. So I would be willing to ask Russ to simply put in the deal that we offer the churches a, let's say, 50% or a 40% reduction to try to bring them back to what is a status quo of what they're paying currently. Part of that is when they do the trip generation, there is no specific, as I understand it, no specific calculation that determines churches. We all know that churches maybe meet once or twice a week. So trip generation that's based on seven days is extending and making worse the trip generations coming from a church. So we would have a justification for, let's say, reducing their fee by 40%, 50%, whatever the number is we would agree upon. Relative to the Gateway Golf and Country Club and the Pelican Preserve Country Club, nobody else, nobody else in Gateway pays for water and/or wetlands in their calculation of their assessment. That is not fair. That is not equitable. And so the consequences of the calculations that Russ has done shows that there is a reduction. In fact, they would have grounds to come after us for we've been overcharging them for years in a fair and equitable basis. So I think with the exception of the churches, and I would agree with you on that, Bill, I would agree to a an agreement of the board to reduce the amount for our three churches by, let's just say, 50% of their assessed valuation and approve this thing as written. That's all I had, Chris.
Yeah, we've gone with questions and comments. You're making.
Well, before that, if a motion is made, then I think the discussion was this is not, my understanding, this was not on the agenda for approval today. It was to set a public hearing
Right.
and advertise a public hearing for its approval at a May 21st board meeting. And also at that time, we also need to recognize that the numbers in here are based upon the fiscal year 1920 budget year as approved, not based upon the 2021 budget. And what will happen if the board approves using this assessment methodology for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget, we plug in the numbers, the district will then advertise with a big map, individual mailouts to individual property owners of this new assessment, it's a new assessment. And then they can show up at the public hearing and object again at that time to the methodology, to the calculation, to the application to their property and to the amounts. So that's the approving its use. If the board decides to do that at its May 21st meeting, will that allow staff to use that when calculating proposing the proposed budget? But recognize that when the budget is up for final consideration approval, we have to do the big map advertising. We have to do the mail notice advertising to every property owner as to what this will do to their assessments. Russ, any comments on that, Russ?
No, Tony, I think everybody's kind of encapsulated it. The one thing I want to mention, I got an echo now, don't I?
I'm getting a horrible echo, guys.
Why don't everybody mute for a second? Let's see if that works.
We're muting mics now.
Mike?
Anyway, getting back, is that better? Getting back to what everybody had said, it's taken, you know, and I appreciate the the time and the patience that you've had because there were a lot of parcels to review. And especially when I went over to Pelican Preserve as well, we did a number of different calculations even after the P-PAC meeting. But that being said, we now have assessments for every property in Pelican Preserve and in Gateway. So the entire Gateway Community or Services Community Development District has assessments for each property. What, as far as the churches are concerned, the board has that right now. I'll let Tony speak to that, but they do have the right of changing that particular assessment if they need to. And what we would do is we would calculate that back in. That's going to raise everybody else's assessments for that difference. The last thing I wanted to mention was the fact that, as Tony had pointed out, I used last year's budget. First of all, I didn't have this coming year's budget. And second of all, I wanted you to get an idea of, since everybody had their assessments last year, what the difference was in a comparison. So that was the only reason that, those were the two reasons that we use last year's budget in this methodology. And as Tony had mentioned again, this is just the methodology for it. It's not the final assessments or anything like that. That will be calculated. Once you get your budget approved, we will put it into the, to the the spreadsheets, if you will, and all of the assessments will be calculated. And it is set up now where I can turn it over to your, to your assessment person there at Infomark. All they need to do is plug in the budget and it gives all of the assessments. So that's, and then I just gave you the written report, so that's the last piece of it, unless anybody has any questions.
And if I may briefly follow up on what Russ said. I think the purpose of putting in the FY 2019, 2020 numbers was just to give you an order of magnitude relative to last year's numbers. And if the budget goes up substantially this year for all those O and M and capital items as mentioned, that order of magnitude would be greater. As to the religious institutions, the statute provides that the district has the ability, if it so desires, to exempt property owned or occupied by a religious institution and used as a place of worship or education from any special assessment levied by the district. So the ability to, if you wish to say, assess it at half of what it would be is appropriate under that statute. That's 170.201 subsection two. And it says if the district desires. They call it municipality, but apply this.
Yeah.
I understand churches do have trip generations. I know you're saying they have no IT numbers for churches?
Oh, we do have IT numbers, and that's what I used.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just have one one comment, please. So the only, what I would like to see happen is we're basing this assessment on a methodology that we can substantiate, we can justify, and we can, we can say that it's, you know, fair and balanced. I don't know if I like the idea automatically just coming out and saying, okay, we're going to make special considerations for, you know, for one particular area and typically the churches. So a personal preference would be to not make that decision at this point because I'd much rather start saying that we can justify the assessment methodology across all properties, regardless of type, and it's based on mathematical calculations, and there's no bias in it whatsoever.
Doug, I think though that, and again, the way the schedule was set up was for the board to advertise approval of the methodology on May 21st. And at that time, that could be approved. But I think board would need to at that time, as part of the methodology, agree, say yea or nay as to how they would treat religious institutions. Because that would, that would be part of the assessment methodology. Ross, do you have a disagreement with that or not?
No, I agree with you, Tony. I think that's, that's the way you need to approach it.
Yeah, okay, then we'll make that determination.
Yeah, that can be made 21st again. Again, if Russ does the analysis that was discussed or indicated to show what the impact would be, if that's what the board desires.
Tony, can Russ or can you put out a notice for this public meeting such that it would show both the 2019, I understand what Doug said, and I agree with that, the 2019, 2020, and the 2020, 2021 budget years show the impacts of both in the advertisement such that everybody gets a flavor of how, what the impacts of this are. Then we make the decision of whether we want to reduce the church or any other changes or modifications we want to make after the public input.
I guess the difficulty with that is the board does not yet have the proposed budget for 2020, 2021 in front of them. And I don't think they would by May 21st.
So then the only choice we've got is to present the numbers that Russ has been given, put those out, and we go with it as, as it is.
Yeah, because once again, you're just approving the methodology to utilize for the 2020, if that's the board's direction, 2020, 2021 fiscal year. And then when you actually have your proposed budget, then you advertise that, and then the separate notice goes out with the map and everything else, individual notices as to this assessment methodology has been utilized to calculate your assessment. Here's what your assessment is. And that's when people, again, you get two bites of the apple in a sense.
Well, the reason I bring that up, Tony, we all know, we've been down this road enough. We all know that what's driving our assessment methodology is the stormwater management system. So so goes the stormwater management expenses, so goes the assessment. It's pretty much that simple. Also, I'm trying to say is that if there were a way to do it, and I understand we don't have it, we just have to go to the people and be honest and tell them this thing is stormwater driven based. And if we have and or continue to have large expenses on the stormwater side, those with the high impervious base are going to pay more.
What I would suggest is then that there be a cover memorandum, again, that the, there'd be a cover memorandum prepared by Russ or Danny or Chris or maybe a collaborative saying this is a proposed methodology to be considered by the board. And the major reallocation is as follows, in a bullet point summary, is an executive summary. So that highlights what the major substantive changes are. And then the recommended substantive changes are in the body of it. But if you want to highlight it to people, I think that's very appropriate, like in a three or four-page executive summary. Tony? Yeah.
I was gonna say, this is Russ, and that can be done. And Ed, one thing I do want to point out, I agree that it's water management based, but it's also transportation based. Those trip generations are significantly different between commercial, between a single family, between multifamily. And that is another driver of it.
Yeah, the residential use is single family is typically the highest trip generator per unit. Multifamily a second, then you go down the line to ALF skilled nursing facilities, et cetera. And then from the commercial side, typically the retail operation of, you know, the 7-11s and medical offices are usually the high trip generators. That's my recollection. Is that correct, Russ?
That is correct. That is correct.
Well, I absolutely have no problem with running it out as we've got, as it's been written. I think it's one hell of a report. It's a report that is way past its due, should have been done 15 years ago, 20 years ago. I think we put it out on the street. We have the public hearing. We get the public input. And then we come back and we make the decisions. I like the idea. I would go along with the idea of showing the numbers on the churches as they exist by the math. And then we could always make a decision based upon whatever basis we want to make that we reduce pro rate, whatever you want to call it, the churches. I just don't see any of the others as applicable. If we get back and get into a discussion of looking at individual homes and having 9,000 different calculations of rates and charges based upon acreage and impervious surface, and I'm going to argue that I've got two people in my house. I don't have six. Why am I paying for kids that I don't have? I mean, I could sit here and take this to oblivion. You can't do that on this. I think we have to follow basically the general accounting principles on engineering, putting an assessment methodology. And I think, Russ, you've done one hell of a job.
Thank you, Mr. Tinkle.
Chris, I don't have, I have two questions. And one of them is about the public hearing on May 21st. Hopefully, we will be beyond video. And we will be meeting in person. And so let's just say, what happens if we're not? Do we delay this public hearing until such time that we can actually have this presented, say, at the church or at the district office?
Well, that's, that's a good, good question, too, because even if the things are starting to open, say, at the end of the month or by May 15th, Bill may find by the 21st, a large reluctance of people to go to large gatherings. And I think that is a consideration. And also, there is a big impact with the, because the assessments will be, as they are in other communities that do this. You'll be lowering the multifamily and bringing up the single family and similar to increasing a water bill. You know, that always gets people's attention, especially now with the amount of unemployment, job losses. So the
And if I may chime in, I think that if we're, hopefully, we'll be in a position where public meetings and gatherings can reoccur. Because something of this magnitude and a change of this significance, I would not be comfortable advising the board to hold a virtual remote meeting on this. I think we should all look forward to, hopefully, to be able to have an in-person meeting in a facility where we can hold it, even if we have to, say, keep the larger distance from everyone, but still provide enough opportunity for people to attend in person. That's the difficulty. But I think, right now, I think May 21st, hopefully, will be a good date.
And it may be that with the advertisement, that shifted to the first meeting in June. And then we'd also probably have a much tighter number on the budget if we wanted to do a calculation.
And that would be June 4th.
Correct.
I would be, I would be more comfortable with moving it to June 4th, just to know that we're beyond all this lockdown.
And Chris makes a good point. By June 4th is when the board was to approve the tentative budget. So to the extent that the assessment methodology would then be able to arguably apply, because that's the not to exceed number at that point. Also, once we send the notices out. So that could continually work. Chris, do you have a, are you okay with that? And Russ?
Yeah.
It could give us a little more time to get out in the community and bet some of this information and get it distributed to, since, you know, we do have the final report now on some of the issues, so that executive summary letter, we could start to circulate and do a public information outreach.
What might be a good idea, though, is at the first meeting in May, if Russ could provide a draft of the executive summary. And what we also talked about, they now, at least have the board, in front of the board and the public would have it at that time also, before we have a hearing in June to adopt it or not.
That sounds good.
Guys, I was born at night, but it wasn't last night. I smell a rat in this. It's going to be deferred for another year, and I'm not going to be a part of that. Let's have the meeting in May, like we said. If we run into problems with the COVID-19 that requires us to extend it to June, we do it, but let's stay on schedule. I am not in a mood to have this delayed or deferred. You've done it for the last two years, and I'm not for that, and I'll vote against it every time. And it will be an election issue.
Again, the board could set it for the 21st, and depending upon the circumstances, could extend it or continue.
I'll go along with that.
How far in advance do we have to advertise a public hearing, Tony?
Well, this one, to be conservative, I'd try to factor in 30 days to do that. So if the board advertises it for marketing questions, we can put in the ad, as we always do, that the hearing
Tony, you're breaking up really bad.
I wonder what's causing that. I'm sorry, the board could advertise it for, I'm conservative, and so that's why I'm going with the 30 days advertisement. And then the board could at that, we can put in the ad, as we always do, that the hearing may be continued to a date and time certain, depending upon what happens. That provides flexibility. It sets a date, but also provides the ability, depending upon the circumstances, health-wise, if the board Depending upon what happens, that provides flexibility, it sets a date, but also provides the ability, depending upon the circumstances, health-wise, if the board needs to continue it, but it does set the date.
Well, my concern is, is that delaying it much longer, we've already come May 21st or whatever the date is, we're going to have lost 30% of the community to seasonal and leaving. We go into June, it's going to only get worse. Let's get this thing on the street as quick as possible.
Yeah, I agree with that, just because if we do run any issues, or if there's a sticking point, I'd much rather have a little more time for us to talk through it. As opposed to waiting and missing, missing a window to approve or make, or make modifications.
I just wanted to throw that out there, because these are unusual times, and I would not want to try and hold a public hearing via go-to-meeting.
Okay, hello. Oh, I agree with Margaret, I wouldn't want to hold a public hearing virtually.
And I'd also like to, I'd also like to throw out there the idea that I I'm assuming from what Russ said, that he did fair and equitable on the churches. And the trip generation is different for churches than it is for the 7-11. We're already going to be burdening the single-family homes with a higher rate. I I don't want to raise it even more by giving an advantage to three churches that already we can prove the, the rate is fair and equitable. I wouldn't be comfortable with that. I know we weren't deciding that tonight, I just want to throw out my thought on it.
Okay, are there any other?
This is Russ, as Tony has mentioned, you can make that decision in May. By that time, you will have edited for, you know, when you got it out into the public to understand what you might want to do with that.
I understand this, expressing my opinion on it, because it was talked about earlier.
Are there any other comments, supervisor?
One question, Russ.
Yes, sir.
Question, just to put this and give it an order of magnitude. The increase in those three churches, that's what, about $15,000?
I believe so, I'd have to go back and take a look, but if you have, I'm sure.
In the ballpark. And we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of 8,000 total ERUs, EDUs, EAUs, whatever you want to call them?
Well, actually, no, it's going to be on the, just the gateway side, remember, because it doesn't fall over into Pelican Preserve.
Oh, the churches don't impact Pelican Reserve?
No.
So we're talking 66, I'll, I'll drop what, whatever innuendos that might have, but let's do some math. If we're talking $18,000, we're talking 6,600 EDUs. My math says that that's $3 per EDU, correct?
According to your math, yes, I would have to, but to be honest with you, I would prefer running the number and letting everybody know.
But my, my thing is, I understand that, I don't want to put you in that position, I'm just doing this math real simple. If it's $18,000 and it's going to be picked up and transferred to residential users, well, not only residential, multifamily users and commercial users, it's going to be everybody other than church users.
Correct.
About 6,000 EDUs, which is about $3.
That's about that.
Out of a molehill.
But Ed, also those trip generations are not gateway people. Those are, those trips are from outside of the community. So you're asking the people that live in the community to carry the burden of the trip generation on churches that are taken care of. And most of their denomination is probably not living in gateway. I just wouldn't feel comfortable
Don't bring up that, don't bring up that, good God, every commercial establishment in Gateway falls into that category.
And we're not giving them special consideration.
Correct.
Okay, let's, let's move on.
I'll go along with whatever we come up with, but let's just get the meeting on the May 21st and have the public meeting.
No problem. Just know that there's a possibility this could get it, just be prepared.
I'm sorry, you, you broke up.
I said, I just, just keep in the back of your mind that if the quarantine or the shelter at home hasn't been lifted by May 21st, that this may be extended. It's the only thing I want to throw out there. We won't have any, we won't have a
Be a board decision, will that be a board decision?
We can't have a public hearing using go-to-meeting, I don't even think you would want to do that.
No, my, my point is, is that if they, they have, still have the restrictions on assemblies of so many people, 10 people, then it is what it is. But we can go over to a Trinity church, it holds 350 people, put them six feet apart and we'll put a hell of a lot more, we'll have more separation than you will have people. We just don't get that kind of attendance at our meetings.
Right, also you have to, you know, Trinity may not be willing to allow us to hold a public hearing if we're still under a shelter-at-home order from the
I totally agree, that, yeah, I totally agree, if we're still That's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah. Okay, I will, I'm ready to move on. Do we need to make a motion to set this meeting for the public hearing?
What I would do is that the board authorized preparation of drafting a resolution and advertising a public hearing for May 21st for the board to approve the revised assessment methodology.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second, okay, well, we'll go down the vote list. Supervisor Flaherty?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Supervisor Guy?
No.
Supervisor Banks?
Aye.
Chair Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Aye.
And then the motion carries four to one to do the resolution. And the announcement to set the public hearing, May 21st, with the possibility forth, depending on the
I'm stepping out for just a second while you start the next item.
Okay.
Do you need me for anything else?
Chris?
Oh, sorry, Russ.
Chris, a comment?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
This comment, we've got the engineer's report, I've read that document. And it looks to me that the engineer's report is nothing more than a presentation of the factual information upon what's the assessment methodology was prepared. And so I would, I would indicate that I have absolutely no problem with the acceptance of the engineer's report.
Okay, and Tony, I'll defer to you, but I don't think we need an official acceptance of that to include it, it was part of the methodology report.
Okay.
The engineer's report is considered part of the methodology report and assessment?
Right.
And we'll move on to item, item 3C. And what we did here was just did a preliminary budget review and we're really getting started a month early. And what we were going to do after the meeting today was, was take the budget that we put together and send it down to Stephen at Infomark. And these are templates he provided to us, and we went through and made adjustments from the staff level. And then put that together. And those will come to you for your tentative budget next month. And also when we start having the budget meetings to discuss these in detail according to the schedule that was approved at the last meeting. And I'll just briefly go over a couple items we did on here and where there is some significant differences. One, we did ask Danny to provide us budgetary estimates for the different line items for engineering services throughout the budget. The draft you see here does not have those numbers included, but they, they were included in the last couple of days and will be the numbers that will go down to Stephen. And there was actual significant reduction in those fees compared to the last year. I also did the same thing line item by line item with Tony. We looked at the legal fees that he had in the past expenditures. And that those are not reflected on the document you see today, but they have been reflected in the document that'll go down to Infomark to generate the final budget templates. And where you basically see some huge increases, and we put them up there for discussion, is on the waterway management side on the stormwater. Now, we, we have had traditionally the past few years, $250,000 allocated to stormwater pipe cleaning. And that number is in there too, but we also added a number for stormwater pipe repair. One thing we found as we cleaned these pipes is there's some significant damage going on that, that needs to be repaired. We found two instances in Callaway Greens, and we were back there and we were aware of one where the road's settling. And another one where the stormwater pipe is between two homes at a depth of 10 to 12 feet. Repairing those pipes in place is close to $30,000 a piece. And then you have to go in there and do the camera and the pre-work on them too, so. And we have three other structures we found with significant problems, so that amount of money's gone up quite a bit. We also increased at $250,000 for paving, and we're really looking at sidewalks and the bike trails that we all know around Gateway Greens. And also down by the elementary school have significant problems. And if left unrepaired, will result in lawsuits for slip and fall and, and bike accidents. And we actually taken some of the paving money from this year, and we just had, got a couple bids and we'll be going down in the next few weeks with finesse paving. And repairing the trail, the asphalt trail by the elementary school, it'll cost approximately $16,000. And that'll be coming to you at the next board meeting. Another item that popped.
Question, Chris, on the storm sewer repairs, are those not eligible for SRF consideration?
SRF does not do maintenance work. They're, they're for new capital expenditures, they'll be glad to help you fund a brand new lift, lift station, but rebuilding a lift station, no.
Storm sewer rehabilitation and/or replacements not eligible cost?
No, sir, not, not renewal, repair, or any type of maintenance work. And they'll, they'll help you build the, the new lake banks, but when you go in and maybe have to replace some of that stone or do some maintenance work on it, it's not eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Item that you see in here that we added was $500,000 to redo a soccer field. And basically the soccer fields are ending the, their useful life, and it's no different than a fairway or a green on a golf course. Once they've ended their useful life, it becomes very difficult to keep them playable. And those fields out there are getting to the point where they really need a complete rebuild. And that's just one field at that half a million dollar cost. And we put, put that in there for nothing else to get the discussion going, you know, on the cost of those fields. We are looking this year at switching some money around instead of replacing those ballast boxes, or replacing the lights with LEDs. That don't require a ballast box and result in about a 65% energy savings. So we are looking at ways to save money over there. But it's only a matter of time before that turf. We won't be able to keep it in playable shape, that those fields are going to need to be redone.
What's the total acreage, Chris, on those fields?
I, I couldn't tell you, I think it's around seven, I would have to pull the number up and see, but we, we got quotes from two different companies to
And your prices for what percentage of the seven acres?
That is just one field for the 500,000, and that's turf and also redoing the drainage on the field. And same thing, the irrigation systems on all those fields are about at the end of their useful life.
I, I would agree with that, so i- if you projected it to do all seven acres, so that we know what the order of magnitude is, what's the total cost?
It'd probably be right about three to 3.5 million dollars.
I had a hard time hearing that, I think I heard you say three to 3.5 billion dollars.
That's what I said.
Thank you.
And that's why we only put in for one this year. And we also, we also put in the first year of what we looked at as a five-year streetlight replacement, first year being a quarter million dollars. The streetlights really aren't any different. A lot of them are 25 years old, 20 years old, and are approaching their useful life. And if you go out there and look at them on the boulevard, you'll see the condition some of those are in. So that's really a new item is that $250,000, which would be the first year of a five-year program. The good part is while you're doing the replacement of those lights, you replace them with LEDs and get some energy savings, which helps in the payback period. But it's a significant capital outlay.
I just did a quick calculation, Chris, that I'm sure there'll be those that will love to hear this. Seven acres works out to be if we would change it to AstroTurf and eliminate the grass, little over $12 a square foot. You can do a hell of a lot of AstroTurfing for $12 a square foot.
Yeah, we, we got an estimate to do one of the fields in AstroTurf, and that was $750,000.
How many acres?
That's one field, one regular
I don't know what a field is.
Oh.
Two acres, one and a half acres?
I do not know what that number is, Mr. Tinkle, I'd have to look at the survey and the estimate.
My, my, my point is, is that when you look at the long-term service life of a field and all the costs we incur on maintenance of a sodded field. And you do a long-time capital recovery factor, well, I'm telling you, that AstroTurf is all of a sudden looking really good.
And you do save the cost of the water and the irrigation, even though in some areas in Collier where they do have artificial fields, they still use their irrigation system to cool them off.
Okay.
Yeah, and so what you, what you'll see is in, in the budget is, is in some of those big program areas with some of the older infrastructure. You know, you'll see 250,000 to 300,000 that you haven't seen before in those areas that I just addressed. Some of the other fees that have gone up have been more minor. Internet and electricity and copier, because now we have two copiers and we have another building out back. And, you know, janitorial services related to that, but those are minor operational costs. On the plus side, we're saving $7,700 on our insurance premiums for the year, but again, a small amount. We also put in $40,000 for a new pool filter, a glass filter. We don't need to do it right now, but the filters up there are aged, and one of the issues is we look at payback. And if you put in a glass filter, that'll last 10 to 12 years easily with the media in it. Where right now, we're spending almost $4,000 a year changing out the cartridge filters on the existing filtration system, much less the labor that goes into changing those filters out twice a year. So when we're putting some of these numbers in here, we're looking at things that it makes sense on a payback. And something that'll increase the operational efficiency.
Hello?
Hey, well, I'll be glad to have any comments. Again, this was really a broad brush and we wanted to introduce it to you and say, one of those program areas we felt needed to be addressed. Again, the, the paving, the sidewalks, the streetlights, and the stormwater system repairs. And those are all big ticket items, now we did have $250,000 in the budget for this year. For storm drain cleaning, we also had $150,000 in the budget this year for bathymetrics, which we moved over to repairing the flowway on the west side of the interstate. And we're also using that money to repair the conveyances off Tree Line and Colonial, and at the Colonial and at the Colonial Country Club. So it's not all a total if we're going to use some of that same money and just repurpose it a little bit. But that'll get down like a line item by line item.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, Kathy.
Okay.
Okay.
According to my mail. Can you hear me without the phone? Can you hear me without the phone? Oh, I felt like I guess you can't hear me without the phone. Okay. My mail.
I can hear you. Did you mute your phone, Kathy?
Hold on.
Yeah, you shouldn't have both all in at the same time.
Okay, can you hear me without the phone?
Yes.
Yeah, we hear you great.
You couldn't hear me before. All right, thank you. Okay, according to my mail, it's a 40%, 7% increase, which is almost about $270 increase for each resident. Um, plus, if you're going to do with the methodology assessment, that's more money increase for the residents. And then you want the surcharge. I mean, we're talking here a lot of money, and a lot of these people are going to be are being laid off. So I am concerned about that. Also, can if we turn to page agenda 183? I have a question on that page. Okay. Look out here, the pool supervisor full-time. I thought we, Chris, you changed that to part-time.
We we have that position in the budget at full-time, and that'll get into a different discussion too, whether you want to continue to run the lengthy hours that we run up at the pool. I know previously we had talked about reducing the hours to mimic the hours that a county pool was open. But if we're going to continue, and again, that's seasonal, we went to part-time during the winter because the hours were reduced. But it may be that we go to a full-time pool person there and two to three part-time, depending on the hours that the board wants to operate the pool.
Because I thought Lynn was the supervisor for the pool.
Well, he's he's oversees pool, the dog park, and mains.
And you have down there in the interim. I thought that was gone. The interim was gone. I missed that.
And utilities to do all the GIS work. That's an existing position right now. That's a part-time, 16 hours per week.
Because I did ask you about the full-time pool position. You told me that was part-time interim. Interim was going to be gone in the next budget. Okay.
You could bring bring make all those positions part-time at the pool. But one of the issues we ran into is now if you have anybody over 25 hours, they're considered a full-time employee. It's not 30 hours. It changed last year, so that becomes a problem because we're obligated to offer them benefits. And since we don't charge our employees for the health insurance, you're talking another $740 per month.
Okay, that's all I have to offer. And I'm sorry about the confusion with the meeting.
Yeah, sure. And again, we'll be we'll be going line item by line item on this next month and getting into, you know, in-depth discussion about it and what that's going to do to the assessment. And it no doubt is going to be a very tough budget year with the layoffs and people out of work. And it's going to be a real juggling act. Any other questions? Or discussion again?
Yeah. I just have just one one quick thing. And I could, I wasn't saying the supervisor comments, but I was going to say, or go ahead and say here. I think if you look at the what the potential outcomes are going to be, not only with with COVID-19, but also what's happening in the real estate market. There's been a lot of new construction. A lot of it even on our on our doorstep and in the in our surrounding area. We've had a lot of new construction over the past, you know, five to seven years in our in our area. One of the things that I think we do need to focus on is again, enhancing our infrastructure. But also, I think we need to be focusing on projects that are going to enhance resale capability and continue to make Gateway an attractive neighborhood to be in. So that's one of the things that I would just, as we look through these things, there's critical infrastructure improvements that need to be made. But there's also things that we need to look either aesthetic or enhancing, you know, some, you know, some amenities or things that would make continue to make Gateway attractive in comparison to other communities. Because the the individuals that I've talked to in real estate and in 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 development, the market for new construction will be more favorable than resale. At least that's the the information that I'm getting. So that's one thing that I just think we should, we need to consider as we're moving forward. So as we're cutting and looking at capital improvements or or things of that nature, things that will continue to enhance property values and the attractiveness of Gateway overall.
Yes, sir. And one one thing we're going to be doing too next month when we put out our annual water quality report is we have another newsletter go out. And we put it heavy on the photographs, the improvements, what we've been making to the stormwater system, to the soccer field and and even in the downtime with the pool with our split staff. We've had one of the staffers up there repainting all the front gates and the entryway and the buildings. And so they get a fresh coat of paint. We have a new gate locking mechanism on the pool. So we've been spending some of this time doing the sprucing up and upgrading.
Sounds good.
Any other comments? And again, we're we're looking at anything that we can do as far as consolidating staff and staff responsibilities, you know, to to keep the staffing to a minimum. And I know there's, it's been said in the past that we're still two or three FTEs under being staffed up for local government of our size. But if there's a way we can reduce that or keep it to a minimum or get more effective and efficient with it, believe me, we're going to move forward and do that because we don't want to put an unnecessary burden on the residents. And anything we're going to do, we certainly want it to be transparent and to be able to justify it. And I think one of those moves, a good example is is hiring Bill Shaw as an electrician. Because when you have somebody on staff that can go out and do that kind of work, the amount of money that we save from hiring the electricians and bringing people in or contractors in is just enormous. And same thing with the utility staff with the capabilities we've developed there and the service capability that we have. It's it's saved huge amounts of money from having contractors come in to do a lot of this work.
Question, Chris?
Yes, sir.
What's what's the status on our business manager with Frank? Is he still there part-time? Or where do we stand? And if he's not there, what what are we doing?
Well, he's working part-time, and we have that position advertised on deed. And we also have it on the FASD Journal, and it's going out advertisement in the Public Works Journal. We have gotten a couple candidates that could be suitable. I've had several discussions about that position and how we do the mix with the business side of it, the administrative side of it. Because similar to my craft, you know, part of Frank with it, you know, it's just a huge burden of administrative work in that position when you get into the HR aspect of it and the insurance aspects of it and just the amount of paper that we have to deal with. We're a small local government, but we still have a government burden in there. So looking at that business manager, get more support from the an administrative assistant position that we really haven't filled since Diane left. And you see that on the staffing that that position's open. But we want to bring the business manager in and let them be instrumental in hiring that administrative assistant.
Well, I.
Have all that all that done in the next 30 days. Until then, you'll see Brian and Kenny and I running the budget process with help from Leslie.
Well, I see what you're doing, and I understand it. It's admirable on what you're trying to do as far as cutting costs. But I just don't want to see us ever going back to the deal of where we have people doing way more work than is necessary just in the name to save money. This is why I think we lost an employee, a key employee earlier. I'd say let's look at cutting costs, but let's just don't go berserk to where we take the staff we've got and whip them like mules. That's not right.
And.
And I'm, Chris and I, we're going to try to connect this week. And unfortunately, I've just been back to back. But we're going to get together and and I'm see if maybe I got time tomorrow, Chris, or early next week, just to kind of go through and look at the org structure and and come up with maybe some some different options that Chris can bring back to the board and kind of talk through it. Because I think there are some critical needs. And I don't want to split, I don't want to, I don't want to come, I don't want to compound the business manager, which is really like our accounting, our in-house accounting finance business person with too much of the administrative, the HR and and some of that other stuff. I think that needs to be split out. So he and I are going to have some initial discussions. And then I would encourage all the board members, if based on your observations and what you've seen and your input, to to set up time with Chris too and and convey your thoughts on on what that what those roles should be like. Because I almost think that it's, you know, it's it's probably three positions. It's your accounting, business manager, and office manager. And then I'd still like to circle back and maybe kick the tires on on having this, you know, ops manager that is more your 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 project, your maybe that support structure for Chris. So I've got a couple ideas, but I think all the board needs to probably weigh in on what their thoughts are so we can collectively come up with the right solution.
I think you're down going down the right path.
Yep, I agree.
It's going to be a busy May. So, okay, any other comments on the action item? If not, we'll go ahead and move to the last item, which is approving the minutes from March 5.
I have a, I have a question first. Okay. On page 191, where it says the request of the addition to the other minutes. Yeah, I would, on all minutes, I know that the correction should have been put in this minutes too so that we would know what it was. Was my only suggestion.
Okay.
I second the approval from Bill with the modification made.
You've got a motion in a second. Go down the voting line, Ms. Flaherty.
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Chair Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Aye.
And that'll that'll lead us to supervisor comments at the end of the meeting. And I'll go in the same order and start with supervisor Flaherty.
Yes, the only thing I would like to make comment is I asked for the contract spreadsheet to be put back in our meeting book. If that's a possibility, I would like that. That's it. That's the only comment I have.
We'll have it at the first meeting in May for you.
Thank you.
Would you repeat that? I I couldn't understand the language.
The contract spreadsheet she had requested be put in the board book. And we said we'd go ahead and get it in the first week of May.
Oh, okay. Got you. I have nothing.
Okay. Chair Feinberg, comments?
I have one, and that is the next meeting, May 7. Is that going to be a light meeting? Or are we doing anything in preparation for the budget?
We will be having the preliminary budget discussion and, you know, bringing up each of those sections. So we will get started on that in May.
I thought that was going to be the 21st, though. Everything that I'm looking at on my schedule, we're we're going to have the assessment methodology and budget all on the 21st. So I was thinking perhaps we could break a little bit of the budget out and review it, start reviewing it on the 7th.
Yeah.
Otherwise, the 21st meeting could end up being a really long one.
Sure. And what we'll do is we'll split it out and put the enterprise fund, because that's usually the the quickest one, and put that on the 21st. But we'll do the OO1 and put that on the agenda for the first.
For the first of June or what?
7th of May, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I think that also helps if the if it's a general fund discussion on the 7th and get some rough numbers for anybody who wants to plug those numbers into the assessment methodology when they have the hearing on the 21st.
I think that's a good point.
I like that idea. And oh, one of the other things I thought was going to be on this agenda, and it didn't dawn on me until we were talking about something else. I think we were going to discuss the signs at the roundabout to decide if we wanted to can to pay the additional funds for the fancy signs. I thought that was going to come back up.
I'm going to bring those numbers to you. The the bids come out on the 21st from the county. And I have our estimates from the sign folks for the decorative. So I'll bring that back on the May 7th, but I'll have some hard numbers.
Good, thank you. That's all I have.
Supervisor Banks?
Yeah, I just want to circle back on a couple of things on the budget. So it is much love to see the the fields rehab. I just have a hard time, you know, looking to investing, whether it's 500 or potentially 3 million on completely remodeling those fields when when that money could be used to enhance streetlights, even look at building it out, you know, the the Commons Park kind of concept that we've been talking about. I think that would impact residents, more residents, and again, increase overall amenity usage for the community. Also, looking at, you know, enhancing the entryways and some landscaping stuff. I mean, that's, and I applaud the effort, and it's and it's great. I mean, I'm I'm on those fields a ton. But I would much rather be able to continue to maybe maintain those for another five years before making that significant type of investment. And who knows how the, you know, how things might might change as far as use, field use at that time. So that's the things that I'm thinking about going into this budget. And we're probably going to have to get lean on it. But I'm thinking more of long-term impact to the community, of both short-term and long-term impact to the community to continue to raise the property values. I think the work that we've done on the on the ponds, the ones that we've done look great. I'd like to still maintain that level of of quality. But I think you just need to get creative on where the biggest thing for our buck is and how that ties back to overall property value.
And we can.
Go ahead.
An estimate to you for the budget discussion too on modernizing or sprucing up the entry monuments.
Yeah. So we're going to have to cut some things. And the only, and the other thing is, again, if if we're to to piggyback on Ed's point, you know, if we're looking for cost saves, one of the last places I would look is probably in staff. I think there's, you know, Chris, you know, continue to get creative and drive efficiencies. But I think the job that the staff has been doing has just been exceptional with the work that they've been doing. So if we continue to enhance that, make these these roles more attractive, then for me, I think there's there's a lot of benefit there. So that's that's all the comments that I have.
Mr. Tinkle, supervisor comments?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, ditto everything Doug just said. I think he's right on point. A couple of issues. One, I don't know what it took, because I I don't get into this techie stuff. But whoever put all this together, I've impressed, it's worked very well. So kudos to staff and the chairman and whoever else put this together. So kudos to staff and the chairman and whoever else put this together, because it has worked. Couple of issues. Issue one, is everybody aware that South Florida Water Management District has issued a directive that water usage is now going to be enforced at two days per week and so many inches per acre per property? We need to make sure I walk up and down to my street and I see the water running every single day on certain lots. And they've made it clear, it's two times per week and that's it. So that's one issue. The last thing we want is the South Florida Water Management District in here policing our community. The next one I got is I saw an email and I don't know, Tony, if you had it or were involved in it, but it had something to do with somebody from the city of Fort Meyer requesting a release of our tax credits for some development. And I, it was way over my pay grade. What the heck were they talking about?
No, I think it was a broker looking to buy some of the fire impact fee credits.
Yes, it was.
Can we sell them at five times value?
If that's what the market will bear, usually they're sold at discounted value. We have an agreement with a broker to sell them. So.
Just, I just thought I'd, just thought I'd try to generate some revenues.
And it all goes to Pelican Preserve.
Give it to them then. Sorry. It's, it's a, next item I got, Chris, is have we heard anything as to the results of the roundabout bill, biddings and the bid results at Commerce Lakes Drive?
They will open the 21st. They've pushed that back two different occasions.
It might be 21st of 2030 before they open those things. Okay, thank you. And the last one I got is where are we at on? We haven't heard anything from our friends at Zennor and of course COVID-19 put them in, in the back burner. But I'm still really worried about where we're at. Where are we at with investigating meter forensics?
Well, at the moment, we're waiting on them to come out and do their sweep and report on what they've found. And we'll get some defective units, but I have not found a company that does forensics on, on their equipment like that.
How about if I tell you I found somebody?
I'd be glad to get in touch with them because I've got plenty of broken ones they can take a look at.
I, I would like to meet with you and go over that. I think we have an opportunity. I've done some researching and digging and have found somebody that I believe is not influenced by manufacturer and would be a good forensic firm. So I'll get with you, Chris, to go over that. But other than that, again, thanks for putting this thing together. This isn't easy. And other than, other than the feedback and the bounce back that we're getting on the signals, I thought this went very well.
Yeah. And Mr. Tinkle, if I may, and members of the board, to the extent that you've found a firm or a company or individual that has the qualifications to prepare or do a forensic analysis of the meters, I would suggest that any retainer agreement, if he's to be hired, be through my law firm. That way it'd be considered as an expert retained to maintain confidentiality and work product privilege.
Okay. So, so how would you suggest that we negotiate a discussion with them?
Once you talk with that individual and Chris is comfortable, then the four of us can get on the phone if that's the board's desire. And then we can talk about what kind of arrangement it would be to retain him as an expert for purposes of that analysis and contemplation of possibly making claims.
I'm getting a lot of double feedback, Tony. But I think what you're saying, the same thing I've ran into before. Basically, I'm going to let the retention of this firm be through the legal.
Yeah. So that way we can assert work product and attorney client privilege to the extent it's being utilized to analyze possible claims or other proceedings.
Okay, I've done that before. Okay, I'll just get with Chris, throw the ball in his, in his court and then see where that goes. But have we got any type of a, with this COVID deal, we got a mess. But have we got anything coming in the way of a discussion of where we can bring Zennor and what is it, Mr. Sanders in for a discussion of where we're going with this? Cause it just seems to me that we're going down a road I don't like to go down at all.
We've talked to Mr. Sanders and he wants to come to a board meeting. He really didn't want to attend one remotely. So we were waiting till the first time we could have a live board meeting. But he's been very active getting his staff out here. Like I said, they have a team of four that's going to come out and follow in that in two weeks. So I have another staffer out here and do the replacements of all those units and try to find out, get to the bottom of it and at least get us functioning because we're spending so much staff time that a lot of the maintenance work that we like to do, going out and sweeping through the communities and checking cleanouts, it's not getting done because we're spending a lot of time repairing those things so we can get the bills out to people.
Yeah, I think the, when this was an MIU issue, and I've educated myself a little bit in the last two weeks, if this were an MIU issue, I think we would be in one position with Zennor. This thing just crossed the line when it went over to the meter reader. We've got a whole new ballgame with them. And if I were in his shoes, I'd be wanting to do everything to try to appease us. I think he's got a real problem.
And Miss, and Leslie just let me know that Rich is planning on attending the meeting, May 7th.
Yeah.
That he wants to come at that time. And I also wanted to mention tomorrow, we're having a pre-construction meeting for the 221 units that were approved at Gateway and Griffin.
Wait, 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 you talking about over here at the bank?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll tell you, that isn't public knowledge or otherwise you'd have a room full and we'd violate every COVID-19 rule there is.
Well, it's a, it's more on the engineering side, you know, just a basic pre-construction meeting with the engineer and ourselves and Kenny to talk about utilities and, you know, Brian to talk about stormwater. But they're, they're moving forward at the moment.
Okay. Well, again, thanks for the meeting. I think everything went very well. I was really impressed with the way it's set up.
Okay, well, thank you.
And I had a question. Did South Florida Water Management give any indication as to how they were planning on policing that the water use?
They didn't say in the paper. It was in the paper this morning and it's effective immediately. I don't know how they're going to do it, Margaret.
Just curious.
Yeah, one thing I can send around, I think Chris has a copy of the order. There's a paragraph in there and I guess it all depends on what the water irrigation source is.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a little, little problematic with us because we get our water from the wastewater treatment plant, but we also get a, an abundance of our water, probably 50, 60% from groundwater, which does apply to them.
Right. That's what makes it tricky. For example, one of my other districts, they're totally reliant and they totally get treated effluent. So they are okay. One of my other districts just pumps groundwater. They, they're restricted. So again, I'd say Gateway to be on the safe side since Gateway's blended, that that two-day, the two a day applies. I mean, two days a week applies.
I, I would agree with that.
I have a problem with that. I just wondered how they were planning on enforcing this.
Probably the usual technique. They get people calling in probably.
They rely totally on, in our case, county code enforcement and city that the water management district does not do any enforcement at that level.
Yeah. And the district from, and the difficulty from the district's perspective is we're the permittee for that distribution system.
Yeah.
And as Chris has mentioned before, we always need to be on our best behavior when it comes to future renewals or increases for consumptive use permit.
And I don't like.
If there is a, if they're, if they are as effective as LCSO in stopping speeding on Gateway Boulevard, but he's got any problem.
Got a point.
I did have one, one thing I just wanted to address, because I think Rod had put something in the, in the chat and it hasn't been brought up yet. Rod was looking for the board to consider sending a note to the Lee County or DOT with a request to install a traffic light. And I just want to say, we've, we've had several conversations around that. And for all intent purposes, from what I understand, that, that, that horse has left the barn. And I don't think there's anything we could do at this point, but I just wanted to address it since Rod put it in the chat.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have a problem with pushing that because I don't, I don't think the horse has left the barn, but he's close to the gate. This, this whole issue at Griffin Drive and Gateway Boulevard, that, that's a disaster if they put in that roundabout. But we're going to live with Commerce Lakes. I'm just hoping that when they start that thing, they'll find out what kind of mistake they've made.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't have an issue, but I just don't think, I don't know how much weight we're going to be able to carry there.
I don't either. I agree.
I just wanted to let everyone know that hopefully, it just depends on what happens. We'll get back to normal meetings before long. The, I am going to assume that April, just for argument's sake, I'm going to assume at this point in time that May 7th meeting will again be go-to meeting. Hopefully the 21st then will be a regular face-to-face meeting. But I think these have worked out very well and I thank everybody for their patience and participation. That's my last comment.
Awesome.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, and the meeting's adjourned at 5:30. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.